I've got 10 o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting for County of Starr, Monday, November 14th. Let the record show that we do have quorum, all Commissioners being present. Like to welcome everyone and thank you all for being here. If we would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which is sanctified, one nation, under God, indivisible, and omnipotent, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comments for you?
There's none here, Judge.
Okay, thank you. First item is the minutes, all have before you.
I'd like to move your opinion, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Next is the vendors, this.
Yes, sir. Uh, vendors, please, thank you, and I would like to know if there's any...
Move it to approve.
Second. Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Next is claims.
Yes, thank you, and has also been reviewed, and I would like to know if there's any...
Motion to approve, second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Before we start with our reports, I think we have a couple of presentations that, you know, we go ahead and take care of. That way, if you all need to leave, you're certainly welcome. If you want to stay, certainly welcome to stay. First is item eight. This is a presentation from T-DAM, Ms. Rodriguez.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am the new Star County Engagement Officer for Star County with the Texas Division of Emergency Management. Texas Division of Emergency Management is an emergency response entity, and I will be assigned to the Star County area in coordination with other agencies in Star County for any emergencies, any training, and any assistance that we can provide from the Texas Division of Emergency Management.
Ms. Rodriguez, thank you so much, and congratulations on your appointment. I know you'll do a great job. One thing that I do want to remind the emergency management coordinator for the cities and other entities is that everything has to go through you. It goes through the county, through you, before it goes to the state. I know we've had, I guess, problems communicating in the past, but certainly I think you'll be a great asset as far as that is concerned. But there is a chain of command that must be followed. If not, the state will just send it back.
I was also assigned a vehicle unit. It is equipped with any satellite communication device, so anything that is needed with that vehicle or satellite, radio, and telephone to communicate directly with the State Operations Center, it is available to... It is assigned to me 24 hours.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, and by the same token, Leonard and Maricela, I don't see them here, but they're our emergency management team, really, so whatever they can help you with, or my office can help with, certainly we're there to help you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and again, congratulations.
Thank you.
We had one other presentation, and this was by United Way. This is a presentation of a check. We're always happy to see that. Larry, how are you?
Well, good morning, Commissioners. Glad to be here. And Judge Vetta, congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
Happy to see you in office.
Thank you.
As most of you know, Larry Gonzalez and I serve as a board member of the United Way of Starr in Hidal County, and so we're here this morning to provide some checks to the food pantries of the various precincts. And just a little bit of history, we do, this year, I think we're going to fund a little over $70,000 for Starr County, which we do for, you know, for various programs and people in need, and we certainly appreciate all of the support that the county provides to our agency in terms of funding. It's all, everything that comes in goes back to help the people, and so we're very pleased to be able to do that, and I'm pleased to be able, to be a part of Starr County, as my roots are in this area, as most of you know, and I've worked here for many, many years. So having said that, I will have Mr. Lee present the checks.
Can we like to take a picture? Good morning.
Sure. Good morning.
See if they may, make sure to take the picture right there.
You want us to get down, or?
No, you can be up there.
Anyone else that needs to come before the court? I think we have a, with SCC. Okay. Item 11 is to approve a memorandum of understanding between the County of Starr and South Texas College. Chief, I don't know who's going to present that.
Chief, your...
Number 11.
It's not a presentation, it's an MOU.
Okay.
It's an MOU with a South Texas Community College, so they can provide our training. We'll provide the instructors, and they'll provide the, all the information that's needed to submit to TECO. There's no cost. There's no cost to this.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Dr. Montieller, you care to say anything? All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you all so much.
Can we take a picture anyways, just to get a...
Sure. Any, anyone else that needs to come before? If not, we'll go on with our reports. Gas department.
The gas department, I will give it in our next Commissioners' Court.
Okay, so you want table to get?
Yes.
Transfer station.
The report is before you, the one for the transfer station. Let me know if you have any questions. Thank you, Your Honor.
Texas, sir. Salinas.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. This is my report for October of 2022. If you have it in your package, if you can follow me, please. Our total collections in October of 2022 for Starr County Ennis were $2,540,673 with 92 cents. Current collections for October 2021 with $1,591,982 and 22 with 70 cents. There was a total collection of $948,751 with 22 cents, more than last year. Our total delinquent collections for October of 2022 were $229,253 with 25 cents. Our total delinquent collections for October 2021 were $175,361 with 84 cents. There was a total delinquent collection of $53,891 with 41 cents, more than last year. As of October 31st, my office has collected 15% of the projected current collections. Projected current remaining are $14,281,488 with 8 cents. Also, our office has collected 8% of our delinquent collections. Projected delinquent collections remaining are $2,670,746 with 75 cents. Collections made through the American Rescue Plan are $72,071 with 42 cents. Since the program began, we've collected a total of 881,000, excuse me, 811,501 with 29 cents just for Starr County Ennis.
How did we do at the end of the fiscal year on delinquent collections? At the end of last month?
Oh...
For, at the end of September?
I don't have it at this time, Judge.
But did we, did we meet our threshold?
We collected 89? 89, I'm thinking it was 89. I don't have the report for last month.
Okay, come on, come on. It just came to mind, but...
Yeah. I can take it to your offices...
Okay.
Later on. As for the motor vehicle, as for the motor vehicle, our total monthly for the county was $56,739 with 27 cents. Is there any, any questions that you might have?
What we collected from the rescue plan?
Okay.
Does that count towards our delinquency collections, or?
Yes, this is all delinquent.
Okay, so then we should have surpassed our collections last year.
Yes, we surpassed the percentage from last year.
What I had projected, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Any other question, comments?
Any other question?
Thank you, Ms. Salinas.
Thank you.
County clerk, Mr. Gonzalez.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Before I start the report, I just want to congratulate Judge Vetta on your reelection and Mr. Montalvo on your election. You've been a great help to me and my office these last four years, and I do appreciate it, and with your guidance, we continue for the next four.
Thank you.
My report is as follows. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things here. Our records management for the month of October, we collected $6,802. Our records archive was $6,681. Our total due to our general fund was $15,319. For our total due with general and state fees was $33,354.95. For the month of October, being the beginning of the fiscal, we've been pretty steady as far as where we're collecting in. We still have filings coming in, you know, daily and a monthly basis. We will be starting a campaign to put out our public search website for people to come in. Now that we're going to have all our books digitized all the way to the beginning of time, we're going to start putting out a lot of stuff in the papers so that we can start getting in some more funds, because that's almost ready to be done from the American Rescue Plan, and hopefully we can start getting some more revenues with that as well. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is the report for October 2022, and the USA Solutions was $1,500. Marshal Transport Services, $3,005.95. Marshal Medical Services, $292. Marshal Services for Housing Inmates, $100,005.95. And Hidal County Sheriff's Office, $287,122 for a total revenues of $393,164. We had a federal population on November, I believe it was November 1st, 61 Federals, 142 Hidal, 82 State Inmates for Starr County. Our total count was 285. The, the average count was 59 Federals and 149 Hidal inmates. The difference between October 2022 and October 2021 is an additional $111,508,000. We are currently at 9.83% collected for the fiscal year. That is my report.
If we can keep that pace.
I hope so. It's doing well, sir.
Yeah.
I believe this is the highest ever.
Yeah, it is. It's the highest ever, so congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is the report for October 2022. On total revenue, traffic collection was $210,737 with 50 cents, and we show an increase of $31,434 for the month of October 2022 compared to the month of October 2021. And we also show an increase of $6,011.50 on collections for the month of October 2022 compared to the month of September 2022. And we have the exchange excess of $300.47, and the grand total collections for October 2022 is $211,379.97. Do you have any questions?
The Bridge has also been doing very well, so...
Yes.
On the construction, reconstruction, or the repaving of the trailer from Mexico, we're done. So we started yesterday. Today or yesterday, we're going to start going through that lake, so we're already working.
Yeah, I know that caused a hiccup there for a little bit, but...
Yeah, but we're good. We're rolling already.
Yes.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Treasure, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. You have my report for the month of October 2022 in front of you. If you could just please follow along with me. The ending balance for the general fund is at $2,437,364.68. The ending balance for the Road and Bridge is at $142,223 with 20 cents. The Enterprise Funds, the ending balance is at $880,547 with 72 cents. The Drainage District, the ending balance is at $3,678,267 with 21 cents, which brings the grand total ending balance to $7,138,402 with 81 cents. That is my report, Judge, Commissioners.
Okay, well, it certainly looks very healthy, so that's a good report. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
One question, going back to Ms. Salinas, and I was going to ask, and I forgot, on the discounts, the 3%, 2%, and 1%, you had mentioned that since the statements were late, we were going to extend the 3% through November 15th. Is that correct? Okay, just want to make sure.
Did, what, what was that, sir? The discounts are parasaid.
The discounts, if you paid in October, November, or December, we had the 3%, 2%, 1%, but the statements were late going out, so we're giving them another 15 days. So if you pay, if you haven't paid, and if you pay tomorrow, you still get the 3% discount. And just to, to get this out, the county is the only entity that gives discounts.
I know. I know, and, and we're also, you know, we don't want the taxpayers to be hurting, so we're giving them an opportunity to pay, even though the statements were late.
Right.
So we, you know, they have the option to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Salinas.
Good morning, Judge. Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have before you the monthly, un-audited monthly report for the Auditor's Office for October 31st, 2022. Page one, I present the cash balances available as of October 31st for the three main cash accounts. General Fund, we had $2,194,702. The Road and Bridge, we ended up with $3,138 at the end of the month. Payroll Clearing Account ended with $240,976. Moving on to page two, I have a listing of all the revenues for General Fund. Total budgeted revenues for the year, $22,356,639. Year-to-date collected, $33,897. Total remaining revenue budget, $22,322,742. On page three, I present the expenditures for General Fund. The list goes on to page four. Page four, I provide the totals for expenditures. Total expenditures for the year, $22,356,634. Year-to-date expended, $1,648,105, with a remaining expenditure budget of $20,708,529, with an excess of revenues under expenditures of $1,614,208. On page five, I provide both revenue and expenditures for the Road and Bridge. Total revenues budgeted for the year, $7,251,178. Year-to-date collected, $290,319. Remaining revenue budget, $6,960,859. Total expenditure budget, $7,251.81. Year-to-date expended, $531,703. Total remaining expenditure budget, $6,719,378, with an excess of revenues under expenditures Page six, I present the Enterprise Funds for the county. Both revenue and expenditures are presented for Enterprise of the International Bridge, Gas, and Transport Station. The International Bridge has a revenue budget of $2,241,700. Year-to-date collected, $211,038. Total expenditures year-to-date for the International Bridge, $834,264, with an excess of revenues under expenditures of $623,226. The gas system was budgeted for $1,126,500. Year-to-date revenues, $71,218. Year-to-date expenditures for the gas system is $89,912, with an excess of revenues under expenditures of $18,694. Transfer Station began with a budget of $1,500,100. Year-to-date revenues, $4,633. Year-to-date expenditures for the transfer is $123,800, with an excess of revenues under expenditures of $119,167,000. No, excuse me, let me correct that. Page seven, I present the countywide outstanding debt. As of October 31st, we have $973,751 of outstanding debt. And that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Salinas. Okay, moving on with our agenda, we'll go ahead and move on to item number 12. This is an action item.
Number 10.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, let's go to 12, and then we'll go back to 10, since the chief is already up. This is an action item, and it's to approve an open-end vehicle lease agreement for commercial vehicles. Chief?
Yes, that's to purchase patrol cars with that lease agreement. It's under the buy board, so we don't have to go for bids.
Yeah, what this is, and I think it's a really good program, they lease the units, and that gives us more flexibility to having units, and then you turn them in, and you get new ones. So you exchange units rather than have to sit on them and pay them off, and...
We get to get 10 with this lease agreement. We get to get 10, and by doing so, at the end of the five-year lease, we're looking to save at least $50,000. At the end of the, of the contract, there's a buyback program for $1. If we keep those vehicles under a certain miles, the way it's set up, it's on a buyback, we can buy them back for, for a dollar. And by the looks of it, it looks like we can be able to buy them back for a dollar with a savings of over at least $50,000 to the county, where we get to have at least 10 vehicles upfront.
If we buy them back for a dollar, can you auction them off at that point in time, or?
Yes, yes, we can, but we're fixing, it's projected for those vehicles to have no more than, no more than 20, maybe 30,000, 30,000 miles. So those will be very, very good vehicles that we can keep, and having to prolong the life of those vehicles. And they're also willing to work with the Commissioners if you all are...
Do they have a limit on the mileage when you, when you lease it?
Yes, they have.
And after that, you pay, that's it, you have, I think, 12,000 miles a year, or something like that?
For, for police vehicles, it's a little different. For police vehicles, it's a little different. I believe they're giving us at least 125,000 miles.
125,000?
Yes.
125,000 with no extra fee on mileage?
No, no extra fee. The only thing at the end of the five years, they'll give you what the vehicle is, is appraised for, and that money, you can use it to another down payment. But the way we, the way we're going to structure it, the Sheriff's Office, we're not going to exceed those miles, and under the buyback, under the buyback, we could get them back for a dollar each.
Okay, excellent.
Move it to approve.
Second. Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Commissioner, Judge.
Let me go back to item 10, and this is a action item to amend a contract between Milnet Architect Services. Maricela, you want to present that?
That is correct, Judge. It's a, we're going to amend the contract for Milnet Services. That was, the original contract was dated back in November of 2019, and it states here that after 24 months of work that has not been completed, they will be billed, but they extended that contract to not bill Starr County for an additional three years.
Okay, and this is on the courthouse renovation.
That is correct.
Correct. Okay, so they're not, they're not going to be any, any billing to us?
After another three more, another three more years, which is a total of 36 months.
Okay. Okay, yeah, but certainly we appreciate that from, from Milnet...
Correct.
To extend the contract. Is there a motion to approve? Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 13 is also preliminary approval for a 755 State, Phase One.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
755 State, Phase One. We're asking for preliminary approval. It's on precinct four, for the wind signs.
Move it to approve. Second. Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Items 14 through 25 are budget amendments.
I'm going to get started with results and then respond to people.
Motion to approve.
Second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. It is, Monday? See, through, I said through 25? Did I? Okay. It is, it is 7, I'm sorry, 10:37, and pursuant to Section 55, 1.074, we will now go into executive session to discuss order of salaries and the ASO billing invoice summary. We'll be back shortly.
It's 10:11, 11:55, and we're back in open session. We had a couple things to discuss. One was the order of salaries. Is there a?
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Take it.
Moved and second, discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. The other was the order of salaries for the year.
Motion to approve and discuss in executive session, Your Honor.
Take it.
Moved and second, discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries, and the A.S.O. adjusted information, so no action needed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and second, all in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.